Welcome to the Athens City Council, Monday, June 8th, 2015. Tonight, we are on a committee meeting. I will be acting pro tem president and President Nysley is temporarily sitting in as mayor.
I know everybody did.
We had a 6:30 Sunshine Law Refresher presented by our law director and now we're moving into a 7:00 PM Fair Housing Training presented by Donald Eager. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity. Is it all right if I give you these to -- these brochures?
Yes, please.
Yeah, and there's some posters too for you to take a look at. And you can take one of these, okay? Again, my name's Donald Eager and I do the Fair Housing Program for the City of Athens, which is a requirement under the CDBG Formula Program that the state has so that you could continue to get CDBG funds to take care of that technical part of it. Every time that you guys sign off on the Community Development Grant Program to get the money, which is channeled down through HUD, federal government, to the state, and then to you, you're guaranteed that every citizen in the City of Athens has a right to live where they want to, can afford, and this program that we do is part of that. And what we do besides trainings on a regular basis, distributing brochures and so forth, we have a 24/7 hotline, 1-800 hotline for people to call. We publish the number in the city and do all we can to get the word out. And we get calls in and we help. Generally, the majority of those calls are tenant landlord issues. Surprisingly enough, with the student population and so forth, I don't get as many calls from Athens that I would expect, but part of that reason is because your landlords are very well-educated and very well-informed and a lot of times, we don't have the same issues here that we have in other areas. But one of the focuses that I wanted to talk about this time is that we're putting, for the rest of the year, this program year, instead of 12 months, it's 18 months. It started September 1st of last year and it's going to run through December, the end of December of this year. So we're kind of like in a halfway area. And one of the focuses that I were making is the reason that I gave you the posters and so forth is we're going to do a push towards disabilities. Most of the calls, the fair housing calls we get and most of the fair housing complaints we get have to do with disabilities. Since January, we've received four fair housing calls. All four of those were disabilities. Three or two were service animals, companion animals, questions. The other one was a parking space, disability parking space. And the fourth one was kind of a weird one where it just had something more to do with the disabled individual and the person who was managing that just did not seem to be able to talk to each other in a civil manner. And we were able to work it out where everybody's happy and he's happy now and the manager's happy, so at least for the last six months they have been, I haven't heard anything to the otherwise. The other ones were just requests for reasonable accommodations, to have a companion animal. Both cases, they were cats and it was a landlord who was refusing because they had a no pet policy and it was just a matter of getting them to suspend the policy because of the situation with the service animal. And the parking space was taking a disability parking space that was more convenient for the tenant to where it would be nearer their unit instead of way over here. It could be there and it was a -- they did not use a chair, a wheelchair, but they did have a mobility issue and it was easier for them to get in and it was just a matter of having the landlord move the sign and they did that. And as I said, HUD's putting a big pressure, a big push on disabilities this year as the posters show and that sort of thing. And so we thought since we can get a lot of good free information from them, we would tag on to that. And one of the other things we're going to do when school starts, we're going to put out a new brochure that's only for LGBT. We don't -- Athens is one of the few communities in the state of Ohio that is progressive enough to have that as a coverage under the city fair housing ordinance. I don't think it's going to be that much longer before HUD passes something or it becomes, you know, a national issue or a rule as part of the fair housing regulations. But we want to kind of get the information out because, just to see if there is an issue and so forth. Because one of the things that we find with fair housing and no matter what protected class we're talking about, whether it's race, color, national origin, the disabilities, religion, the military status in Ohio, the sexual preference in Athens, is trying to get people to actually make a complaint. A lot of them will call us up and ask us questions and I will say, "Well, I think that you probably have a probable cause, a good chance that what you're telling me, if it's true, is probably a fair housing violation." A lot of times, they will say, "Well, thank you very much," and that's it. You know, and it's trying to get people to tell you, and you would think that it would be otherwise, but it's trying to get people to take that next step and understand that not only they're protected, but there's certain rights. There's a strong issue of confidentiality we never release to anybody unless we're subpoenaed, the name, the phone number, the address, the people who call us with fair housing complaints. We keep that very, very close. And, you know, there's lawyers that we use and it doesn't cost them anything because a lot of people think it's a cost. And it does take, it's not something that just happens overnight in terms of once you file a complaint, you're looking at probably 18 months to 24 months before it ever comes to any type of complaint or anything like that. But it's just trying to get people comfortable in that idea of moving ahead and actually filing a complaint. And that's what we're kind of focusing on. These new booklets, what we're doing is we're designing on the back a sticker that will have distributed by the City of Athens Fair Housing Program and we're going to put all the protected classes that involve the City of Athens with our 1-800 number and the local number and we're going to put these on the back. And we're going to start distributing these along with the brochures. We're totally redesigning the brochures and it's not because they were bad or anything. It's just after 10 years, I'm tired of looking at them. It's time to do something else for them and so forth. So we're going to do that and that's kind of like the last push for the last six months of the year. And this other darker one actually has a complaint form that people can fill out and send to HUD. They just stamp it and send it to HUD, but the thing is HUD will send it right back to the Ohio Civil Rights Commission. So sometimes I'm a little reluctant to send this out because I, when we get fair housing complaints, we like to intercede with the victim of discrimination, with the Civil Rights Commission, so we know what's going on and we know what the status is and we're kind of, we're not their legal representative, but we're their representative that holds their hand through the process and helps them understand what's going on. And all due respect to the Ohio Civil Rights Commission, they're understaffed, overworked, and a lot of times, the way they look at fair housing cases, they don't try to look at the nuances of it. They look at it in terms of black and white and fair housing complaints, a lot of times, are not black and white, so always have to go down and educate them on what complaint is and so forth. So we try to do that. If HUD, if they send a complaint into HUD and HUD sends it back to the Civil Rights Commission, then a lot of times, we don't know it's there until after the fact and even though we have a real good relationship with them. But, so that's kind of what we're focusing on and what we're doing and just to let you know and so forth. And I truly appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you. This is one of my favorite communities to work in because you kind of understand what we're talking about, not to cast dispersion on some of our other. But anyway, I'll leave it at that for our time that I can't get out of. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. If not, I truly appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Eager, for the presentation. And I'll, and we'll open the floor for council members and the public. Any questions?
I just have a comment about the one poster about the veteran and PTSD. I think that's excellent.
Yeah, we're trying to keep those big ones and shrink them down to that size there.
Right.
So it's a little easier to get places, because those big ones are hard to get people to put those up, but those smaller ones are a little nicer.
Mm-hmm. That's a --
Consider our off room for a few.
Yeah, that's a really, that's an excellent one.
Yeah, that is the best one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I really liked that one a lot.
It'd be nice if you could show these, or I could bring them to you, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'd be happy to.
Any other comments or questions for the council? Mayor Nysley.
I'm just, I'm looking at the brochure and noticing, do we have Mr. Eager's information, individual contact information?
Well, not on those. Those are only for the HUD contact.
The formal complaints through HUD.
So the stickers that we will put on those when we distribute them will have our information on it. And it will also, when we distribute it, we'll put the brochure on the inside so that they have all of that information. So this is, this is the one on the PS. I don't know if you can, this is right or not.
It'll zoom in on you there.
And then it also has it in Spanish.
Good.
But it is perfect and very apropos at this time.
My only question was regarding, that's great that you turned the LGBT specific brochure. Are we able to put a sticker on here or something that includes our additional category?
Yes, what we're going to do is we're going to say distributed by the City of Athens and we're going to put all the protected classes that are state, federal, state, and those that are covered by the City of Athens, because there's some others, with the local phone number as well as the 1-800 number, so that it's very specific to the community.
Excellent.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Moving on to the Planning and Development Committee, this is facilitated by Chris Paul.
Great, thank you. Well, our first order of business is talking about cemetery. And I brought this up a couple of weeks ago. We have now the opportunity that is being forced on us by the state to accept the cemetery out on West Union.
With the groundhogs.
Yeah, and there's really not that many groundhogs out there.
I actually live down there and there is a groundhog.
However, I think that there were some questions brought up by somebody, certain article about the cemetery and groundhogs. And I think it's fair to point out that the city will be taking this over. We have no choice. It is per Ohio Revised Code that we will do this. And so now is looking at how we will adjust the city, the Athens City Code to identify this three basic changing of the code to accept and manage the cemetery. We'll have a, some information that will come forward in an ordinance about the person that will hire and their designation. And the auditor will set up a phone line that I was informed they will do through their office. And we will put an ordinance forward to accept the goodies that come with the cemetery, like the truck and stuff, so.
I made it rather simple. I hope you appreciate that.
Simpler the better.
I pointed out in existing code that you've already given a service safety director the direction to oversee a cemetery. We like, I worked with the law director on this, we like keeping the editor's note in there. It's in a number of different chapters that kind of blankets and references the state Ohio Revised Code on that. There's a couple typos that have been pointed out to me, like Riverside Cemetery. I'll get that changed and name them appropriately. And then I left the verbiage to the auditor's office to supply regarding the funds, investments, and whatnot.
And I spoke briefly, well emailed briefly with that they will set up the phone line in the office, but I would, they need to indicate from the different wording which makes the most sense for the different requirements and the designation of equipment and such that we will be garnering in this acquisition.
And a lot of this, when you come down to day-to-day activities, we have a sample from City of Lancaster that has cemetery rules and regulations. And they, the ACA, the Athens Cemetery Association, already has some existing rules and regulations that we'd like to incorporate regarding.
Right, and that makes sense.
Placement of flowers, how long duration, you know, things like that.
Right. And I noticed the sign that says, "No prowlers," and I'm looking at that going, that's the odda sign.
That's amazing, cemeteries, yeah.
I thought it said, "No flowers" to begin with as I was driving by. It's like, even that's odder.
Well, I had to because of some certain person's news article, had to put in here that hunting and trapping not permitted without the authorization of a service, since obviously I may have to trap little creatures.
We don't want to go there.
We get a permit.
So I just have one question. So from now on, I believe there were a few plots that were still available?
There are plots that are.
So they would contact your office, service safety director, because if it's in the county, they contact the trustee of that.
We're actually going to place this under the Division of Lands and Buildings and so we're working out those details with the target date still of August 1st.
And they'll be what you determine a sextum?
Well, I guess that term has some other terms, so I think they're calling it, use the term caretaker.
Okay.
So under finance and personnel, we're going to talk about, well, I'll just say now, a permanent part-time caretaker and then part-time as needed. There's some concern because a cemetery's duration is different than a mowing. It's going to exceed that 120 days or whatever that is, so.
So the bottom line is anybody who would want to buy a plot would contact the mayor's office and then would be forwarded on to the right department.
And utility buildings already tracks a number of different activities and the auditor's already given some suggestions on how to ensure that sales and donations and everything are tracked, so.
I have one question. Cemetery records, who's buried, where?
That's been computerized and it's very up-to-date by the board, the trustees.
And when that shifts over to us, who then does the maintenance, the upgrades, the techie stuff?
Again, that would be part of the caretaker's duties.
Right.
To take that on and keep it up-to-date. That's under that ORC. It's very strict in, you know, in terms of the language and terms of names.
Or they don't have the expertise to do it? That's what I'm getting at. I mean, to me, caretaker seems to be, the image I have is someone who takes care of the graves. Now, now you're asking the same person to also be a data technician, coordinator, and so on. Is that where we're going?
I think that, I think that you're conflating the two.
I am? No, she told me it's caretaker did it.
The caretaker is like the head person that's going to coordinate and be in charge.
So the caretaker is a coordinator.
And there's a seasonal person that may.
With the people underneath them.
A couple, two, you know, as needed in terms of that. Maybe the terminology or the title is not the best title. We can work on a better one. Most of the work, as you call it, is coordinated through the funeral homes. They actually contract with the grave diggers and they contract. So it's, it really is kind of more.
Right, but as time goes on, there'll be less and less of that. Soon it will be filled. Or at some point, the city's going to say, "No more." Okay, if we now own it, we can do as we wish. We could shut it down tomorrow if we chose, if we chose. See where I'm getting at? The point is that that position will evolve out and it's going to be more of just maintenance. We've got to keep maintenance. It'll be maintained.
Well, I think we can address that as we hit that in the future. It's a fairly vibrant cemetery right now and is anticipated to be so because the number of lots that have been sold, there are a number of people yet to pass away from this model of time we have here on this.
Shuffle off the coil.
But I mean, you, as city council, of course, would authorize staffing on an annual basis and you can address those as you see those issues coming forward.
I think it needs to be pointed out that between the people who've been doing it for the last 20 years and the funeral directors, that there's a lot of expertise out there that is, the funeral directors are going to remain part of the mix. So I don't, I don't think that all of a sudden it's going to drop on us. There has been discussion about, you know, the fact that the city may actually be a good place to put the records because we have long-term institutional memory and requirements, storage, and certain, you know, Ohio Revised Code requirements, which may ensure that they're safe for the long term.
Mayor Nysley? We may have some resources with the local person who came and spoke to us that represents the association and there may be some other even resources in other municipalities around the state. I will tell you that in doing some family history research about cemetery plots and looking at a family cemetery plot in a municipal cemetery in New Philadelphia, I discovered that my family from two generations ago had 11 plots, of which five were filled, and that the other ones can be claimed by existing family. So, you know, if you can prove that you're the next in line for the plot. So Jeff's comment also, and New Philadelphia has a person who oversees the cemetery, oversees the maintenance workers, but also maintains that database.
And that will be part of the job description.
It's a fair amount of work.
Particular person, that will be a major job description.
So the answer may be somewhere in between, yeah, some of both of those skills that will be needed.
Well, for example, in Wellston, they do it through the utility billing office. She called herself the obituary queen because she makes the obituaries.
The obituary queen?
Oh.
Other, other questions?
You'll have to number it. I didn't go there, Debbie.
Right, and Debbie will go forward. We have question.
Would the caretaker basically be a working manager?
Yeah, I think that the description of who will be in charge will have to be worked out per city verbiage. But, yeah, I think that what we've gotten is that it's not going to just be somebody who's there just to know, but somebody who will be the point person.
What was the title of the person in New Philadelphia called? Do you recall?
I don't know. I can find out, yeah.
Yeah, there may be some other municipalities we could contact to find out what they call this person.
Okay. Okay. That we, I am going to avoid any jokes about. Okay. Thank you. I would like to bring up the Pioneer subdivision. I know that there was a article in, one of the newspapers. And this basically is, was brought forward by the Athens Planning Commission to okay the de-plating, I guess would be term, technical term. Right now, the Pioneer subdivision is a subdivision. The owners of the property would like to remove the subdivision designation and recombine it into a plot, one lot of land under a single deed so that they can go forward with whatever they want to do with it with a reason. Would that be fair?
That does sound what was presented to us.
Essentially, it's taking it from a subdivision with more than five plots and putting it into less than five, which makes it a major subdivision. Correct?
Well, they called it, it's actually called a vacation of a subdivision, so, and I thought Mr. Parfitt may be here to speak to it tonight in terms of economic. They've got 40-odd plots that they're parcels that they're paying taxes on. They just want to combine it. Didn't seem to have a use designated at this time. Sometime back, Mr. Hayes had called me about the possibility of the farmer's market location, but didn't seem to meet the needs that the farmer's market requires and would like. The ODAT has pretty much established that intersection as right in, right out only because of safety for the school.
But this particular movement on our part is, though the property in question is not within the city, it's within our three-mile planning radius. So that's why we are speaking about it and I, you know, it's straightforward vacation of subdivision.
So I have a question about the sewage and the sewer system there that is located there and what happens when something is decommissioned or vacated or whatever?
All the utilities are private. They did have Columbia Gas come in and kill all the additional services, but have the main in place, so they're. They also have a letter from the township because it resides in township property off the township.
What township is that in?
Athens.
Athens Township, okay.
And anything, if they move forward in the future and want to subdivide it again into less lots than it is now, but more lots than vacation, they would have to go through the subdivision process through the regional planning commission and the city planning commission, so. But that's, I think that this probably makes it more readily easier to deal with from just a title and perspective paperwork.
My concern is usually we're allowing or, you know, voting to bring something in to our three-mile radius. Here, we're, I'm just going to say decommissioning for whatever. Vacating, repealing. So my, again, you said that the gas lines were turned off, but presumably there are gas lines all over this area. And then, again, sewer and all that, and I'm just, I just wonder what the procedure is for that because, you know.
There is probably no sewer. It's probably maybe a pack, is it a packet plant or an individual?
It could have been a packet plant. I really do not know.
Well, see, that's not, I'm wondering if we should have that information because that could affect us in some way. I don't know, but.
We can provide you with a review from John Paske, code enforcement, that's indicated that the lines were private. One thing that kind of I stumbled with was a reference in our code that referenced the State Department of Transportation if it fell within 300 yards or within a feet of a state highway. But what they're saying is it was just a mis-strike in there that it was, because it says plat requirements, which was 04, and the state highway requirement was 14. So they're telling me that's, that's what that reference was, but we can get you all that information.
Well, and my question, you know, you know, factories closed down, places closed down, they're, they're just fallow, they're there, but many years later, people find when they go to redevelopment, you know, redevelopment or sell it, that there's all this infrastructure or utilities or things that were there that then they have to remediate and figure out what to do with. I'm just stating that. I don't know if that's all been dealt with. I just think it should be out there in the public realm that that's a concern.
And again, they were deemed private utilities. My concern is what the future might be in trip generation onto that state highway.
Right.
But those sort of things.
But that's not to deal with the vacation or abandonment.
Right, and I think we need to, to keep our focus, because it's private utilities, that does not make it a responsibility of the city to remediate. I think that's important. And it's, and because it is within the three-mile planning radius, that anything that will be done there with subdivision in the future will go through that regular process and that, that will look at, you know, sewer, trip generation, those sort of things. So I think it's important to, I guess, buyer beware, but it's not the city's responsibility to clean it up, nor will it be because it's private.
Yeah, I wasn't saying it was our responsibility. I just wanted that to be out into the public thinking process regarding what, what potentially lays underneath those broken asphalt streets.
But that's for, that's, yes, I agree with that. So I would say Mr. Parfitt could come next week and then, because then that way, people will have. So I would say Mr. Parfitt could come next week, because then that way people will have questions. If there is questions for something, then let it mull over in your mind, and if you, any other questions?
No.
So that will come forward next Monday. The revocable licenses, straightforward, revocable licenses, these, these are relatively straightforward. They're out on Columbus Road again. And let me get the exact.
You might have them on your laptop.
Okay. One is 751 West Union Street, and then one is 97 Columbus Road. They're for signs, which seems most of our revocable licenses. These are a renewal, one is a renewal for a sign that's on West Union Street. It's just a strange, straightforward renewal, one for 10 years, the other one is for a renewal but under a new, new ownership, so. And these have gone through all the requirements by code, the code enforcement office. Straightforward. And we have pictures?
Nothing on that one.
Okay. Okay, so that will come forward Monday, and that's what I have, unless we have a miscellaneous. No miscellaneous?
Any miscellaneous from the executive branch?
Just that we met today, and Councilman Reisner attended with Columbia Gas to give us an update for the Far East Side project. It looks like they are going to be a go. They'd like, they're looking to hold a community forum, open house for early July, and then they want to tack it and get done in about three to four months. So I'm just providing Jennifer with that information today, asking her to be our conduit to Fina as this comes closer and get a good outreach. I like what they're doing. I don't know if Jeff, if you had any comments about their proactive nature and reaching the other citizens?
I thought it was a good meeting. I thought the idea that they're really putting a lot of emphasis on public safety. You know, we have aging infrastructure, there are gas lines, they're, they're absolutely positively needed, and they're starting to deteriorate, they need to be replaced. To me, it's a no-brainer.
And they've done this similar process in other parts of town.
They actually said they kind of learned from the East State Street, and that's why they're doing it this way, where they have the open house, and they're going to send these flyers to every resident that's going to be affected in that area.
Because they did the similar thing in the Near East, and they did the.
Right.
Yep, so, we haven't blown up.
Yay.
Yes.
Yay.
How many feet or miles of line is this?
Jeff asked that. They couldn't give us good that.
Uh, no.
Is it the whole neighborhood?
No, there's outlined streets in there. We can, I can get that to all of council members, so you have that. We talked about once they have the finalized dates and times for the community house, when they're going to start getting that up on the web, you know, promoting it so people can.
Right.
I can read off the street names if that's helpful, and it's not the entire street, but only portions of these streets. Pleasant View, Dalton, Hillcrest, Strathmore, Graham, Charles, Euclid, Avon, Grand Park, and a little bit of Jacobs. So in some areas, it's just less than a block section, so a very small area, but it is really important that we are able to communicate this with our residents, so I appreciate the outreach because folks have been asking and discussing it and are concerned, you know, about how it might affect their property, their trees, things like that, so the more information we can provide, the better.
Thank you, and along these lines, many of us on council and in the community recall community member Charlie Rose approaching council. He happened to have a profession in which he was walking through the neighborhood on a regular basis and was mindful and aware of these dangers and concerns, and was bringing it to our attention as well as the gas companies. And so all of us as citizens, community members, have an obligation and can do so such as he, in helping address those concerns as they arise, if you sense or detect them. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other miscellaneous?
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Fall. Moving on to Finance and Personnel Committee, which is chaired by Councilmember Jeff Reisner.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item on the line here is staffing. Would the administration care to speak to it?
Sure. At the request now, and I know that staffing keeps coming up, and I guess it's always going to be an issue, is for a, someone to come back from parking enforcement who had retired to train the new parking enforcement data entry operator position. The new person has been selected and is slated to begin a week from tonight, but they understand it may have to go through a few readings in order to bring back the person to train. I would prefer training happen sooner than later, and with, with sunset clause, 60 days from the date of hire, and hired back in at the entry level salary.
And approximately, how long do you think?
60 days is the request.
60 days, okay.
For the training, 60 days?
Correct. And when they say 60 days, I guess I could find out, does that mean five days a week equals 60 days in terms of?
Seems like a lot.
About two months.
Seems like a lot.
Um, you know, it's a specialized position, they've got to learn the computer system, our computer, we have a computerized parking enforcement. If you've ever tried to go and renew your tax and haven't been able to, that's part of it. So I don't think that's ever happened, right? And it could say up to 60 days.
And I think we've done this previously when we had a police department law officer where we had a period of overlap, so I think it provides some continuity in the training.
I think it makes a lot of sense, it just seems like a long period of time. That's all I'm saying, that's all. But I don't know, since I don't work in the office.
So that's the totality, I believe, of the staffing request this evening.
Sorry if I see preoccupied here, but looking at this extremely tiny font of the proposed ordinance that you have here is just about ready to cause my brains to drain out.
Debbie can fix it all up, nice and bright and bold and.
28-size font. Any other questions on this issue? Proposal?
I would, I would echo Councilmember Pappy's concerns, which you acknowledged up to 60 days if the job can be accomplished in a sooner period. Awesome, great, wonderful, would save some taxpayer money, but I also know that we want people trained properly, which leads to efficiency.
What's occurring now is it's keeping a parking enforcement officer off the street, and I like, want them to be on the street.
Sure.
Thank you.
Potentially, we might be able to move quickly on approving.
Are there any documents or manuals or anything that could help people out in this type of situation if they don't have a trainer?
I do, I do not know the operations of every position.
Sounds like it'd be a handy thing, you know, if nothing else, there's manuals on the, you know, pull it down, start flipping through it.
Sometimes people leave their position, you know, not in retirement.
Right, all over dead, then what do you do?
I'm sure there's still manuals that are associated, probably e-manuals with this.
I mean, that's just one of the things you had to deal with, and anything you're dealing with, with technology, especially a very specific type where there's only one or two people who really know it, and the thing that you really dread is one of them's going to get hit by a truck, and that's it. The institutional memory has just went out the door with them, and now you start all over again, ground zero, and you're losing six months trying to get retrained, rehired, rebuilt, to get back up where you were, which could have been avoided if there just had been something on the shelf that said, start here and work your way to there.
I, I would say we try to cross-train as often as possible. The previous position that we did this for was another data entry operator position, but it was in, for the records, the records division of the police department. And again, highly sophisticated software, training them on, oh, open public records laws and things like that. We'll, we'll try to do the best we can.
Well, how soon do you need it?
Again, the individual is slated to start in a week, but you won't even have.
I hate to go through suspension again.
At a minimum, I would ask maybe apply the second reading so that we can. If I can't get the maximum, which would be next Monday. I apologize, the information was not provided to me until last week for this request, so.
We're pretty much stuck with suspending the rules next.
I'm not saying that.
Yeah, okay.
To be efficient.
Let's be efficient.
Okay.
I'm not sure I really like efficiency that much. Okay, next, if we beat that one to death, Arts and West, Arts West Improvements. We have a packet here.
Harder.
Did I?
Yes.
How'd they do that? Staffing, then Arts West Improvements.
Cost allocation.
Updated. You're not on the computer. I know, we are updated. Here we are, updated.
Oh, goody.
In a slightly larger font.
Okay, staffing, cost allocation plan. Work, I thought we was going to do this under miscellaneous. At least that was all the memos I was sending out this morning, I said, we can do this under miscellaneous. Okay, fine, we'll do it this way. Cost allocation plan. You'll speak to it?
That's me.
I guess so.
I will do my best.
Welcome back.
Thank you. For you, we've done a cost allocation. I don't know if people have been had a chance to read what was put together. We do two types of cost allocations. One is for internal services administration. That cost allocation deals with our computers and our vehicle maintenance, and that actually is not a subject that I wanted to discuss tonight, but I won't take any questions about that if we need be. Tonight's discussion, I'd like to talk about the general fund administrative costs that we charge different departments, and that basically is cost allocation so that these departments help support the departments of the mayor, the law director, the treasurer, the auditor, and the council. There are seven departments that we charge every year for that service. The street department, 220, 270 recreation, 271, the community center, the water plant, which is Fund 740, the wastewater treatment plant, 750, garbage, and basic internal services.
Which would be what?
That is our IT department and our mechanics.
Okay.
That service our vehicles and equipment. Our previous cost allocation plan has kind of become defunct and overly complicated, and I've spent some time researching new ways of doing this, and have talked with the city of Finley, which is a statutory city, same as us, and they have done a lot of five-year planning models, and were suggested by the state auditor's office as a resource. Basically, the cost allocation formula takes two different methods. One is to take the budget for each department and get the percentage against the total expenses for the city. So it's really the expenses of the department, all the expenses of the water department as a percentage of all the expenses of the city. The second method is what we call the payroll method, and so we just take the payroll expenses of the water department and get that percentage for the whole city payroll. Take those two percentages, and we add them together, divide them, and get an average percentage. So for instance, in, I've been talking about water, the average percentage between the payroll and total expenses is 9.66 percent. That 9.66 percent is then taken, multiplied against all of the, the total expenses of the mayor's office, the law director's office, the auditor's office, the treasurer's office, and the council. And that's the final dollar amount then, that the, is transferred from water to our general fund. I don't know if everybody had a chance to see the spreadsheet that came with the information so you could follow along with the different departments. When you apply the percentage, the amount of money that would go to the general fund is about, for 2014, would be almost $700,000. Our past history has been that we generally allocate about $500,000 into the general fund from these various departments, and so we have factored down for each department the appropriate percentage. When we take this and compare it to what has been appropriated for this year, there will, it will require some changes. Some of the allocations are under what they should be, and some of them are over. What is being requested of council is to review this type of formula and officially adopt it. I will be in the auditor's, auditor's office will be developing a policy. I've provided you sort of an explanation at this point for questions, and then we will develop a policy to bring back for council to adopt. Are there any questions at this point?
Jeff? Well, that's from Drinking From A Fire Hose. It says also, I'm looking here at an email from the auditor, that says the, besides the policy approval, council needed to decrease and increase appropriations to account for the changes which we have changed in what we have been transferring. Where do you see it going? Is it going to be up or down, or?
There will be some that go up, some that go down. The overall, total amount will stay, remain the same.
So that's your goal, is to keep the, the total the same?
Correct.
But make changes within the various departments and subunits?
That's correct.
So that could mean some will be charged a little bit more this time, and others will be a little bit less?
Correct.
And how do you think they're going to take that?
Uh, we have looked at the budgets, and I think it'll be okay that we have enough wiggle room, we can transfer and make things work.
So there won't be a situation where, for some reason, one department gets charged so much more that it may cause a shortfall towards the end, and we'd have to then find money to make up for that later on towards the end of the year?
We're hoping not. I'm not going to say, I'm not going to say 100%.
Okay, but you're doing everything you can to make sure that wouldn't happen?
That's correct.
So we're encouraged, this is to encourage departments to stay within a budget, to, and the state auditor is recommending this because?
We, we have historically done this, other cities do it as well. It's just an amount of money that eat, that these particular departments provide to the general fund for the services of the mayor, the city council, et cetera. It's not necessarily a budget monitoring technique of any sort, but the auditors have looked at our previous cost allocation, and it has gotten out of whack. And we need to provide the auditor a mathematical formula that is consistent, so not, so there's a reason why we're charging water department X amount, garbage department X amount, and this is a mathematical, just a purely mathematical formula to balance the resources that go into the general fund.
You know, having served on finance and personnel since I've been on council, and I somewhat know the old formula and the way things worked, I mean, as I understand this, this is going to simplify and de-bias a lot of what's going on when it comes to the cost allocations that are coming in and having to be cleared, and we're constantly in the past having to make readjustments as time goes on, and I'm really hoping that this helps iron that out, because again, from my seat, it was, it was always somewhat frustrating that it wasn't on the auditors, it was nobody's fault. It was just this having to constantly reappropriate and redistribute some of the funding, so I'm glad this is happening. I'm glad that I hear you say that this is going to simplify things. I think this is much needed and a step in the right direction.
And there is no one source. I've gone to the state auditor's website, I've talked with the state auditors at our conference. There is no one way or one source to go to in terms of this cost allocation plan. So I've done some, a lot of research, and this seems to be the most reasonable, and it has been audited by the state at, for the city of Finley, and has worked for them.
Out of here. Sorry, where's it going?
And if I'm understanding the spreadsheet correctly, the last two columns.
the last two columns that you have indicated, the 2015, um, total amount appropriated by each of these seven or six departments, seven. And then you're saying it would be adjusted is the final column on the right-hand side.
That's correct, the final column.
So the street department would go from $92,000 in their allocation this year to 105. Recreation would go from eight up to 28,000.
And I. The, I, I need to be clear, clarify that for you perhaps. The second to the last column on the, is where it says 2015, total amount appropriated. That is what, if you take the average percentage and you multiply the total expenses, that would be the number that you would get. And then I reduced it so that the total number is only 479,000. If you look at what the actual amount that's been appropriated in the budget for the departments, I believe actually Streets was appropriated at 92,000. Oh, no, I'm sorry, you're right, yes. Those, the 2015 is the amount that was appropriated. I'm sorry. And the final column is what it should be. All right.
And so that it looks like some of them do, as, as one of the council members said, go up. Some of them do go down. The basic internal services that represents IT and mechanics would go from 5,500 to 19,000.
Some of them go up.
It's a bit of a jump on that one, as is recreation from eight to 28,000. So that would be, I guess my concern is that echoing the other council members that, you know, does it put any one department, you know, in a difficult situation as the end of the year approaches?
I had a question. I had the city engineer review because as you can imagine, he's responsible for 220, 740, 750. But he notes that you took out the wastewater treatment plant capital funding. Did you do that also with the street in terms of grants or loans?
No, I did not. We could look at that.
Okay, if you could. And then you, you indicated at the beginning that you weren't going to discuss the internal service. Is that going to be a separate policy or discussion coming forward? Because again, from Andy's perspective, when you use just computers and vehicles, it doesn't totally accurately capture. For example, we have a mechanic that works primarily on just public safety vehicles 90% of his time. So that would be more likely some fire, because fire trucks aren't easy. So is that something that'll be coming forward later or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I, I was focusing on this particular cost allocation because of the need to work with the auditors. But yes, we have the internal services we want to look at as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments on this?
Okay, thank you very much. I'll be happy to answer any questions at any time.
Well, it seemed like once we got this thing completed for this year, next year should be better balanced, have a better idea. There shouldn't be any shortfalls at the end, like we have. Well, let's see, next, workman's compensation refund. Think you're back up?
Just talked about that as well.
Kind of looks like it. Just might as well stay the rest of the evening.
We did get an email on that today.
Yes.
Okay. Now I'm prepared for that. So I will quickly look at the email.
Councilmember Reisner. If I'm understanding right, the city has received a refund for their workers' compensation funding. And the, knowing that we're going to need to, next year, prepay, the, what they're wanting to do is designate the workers' comp refund check that we, the city has in hand for $110,782.69. Set that aside so that we'll have it for the prepayment.
Yes.
We'll be ready for the prepayment next year.
The Bureau of Workers' Compensation is changing their system of billing. And so they are moving from billing after the fact to before. And so they will be charging us twice in one year when they usually don't. And so we are trying to put money aside for that double payment.
Ouch. I know you walked.
So whenever you get a refund, don't spend it.
Don't spend it, just hold on to it.
Right.
Well, it says here it's void after 7/13/2015.
Put it in the fund.
Well, they'll put it, yeah, they'll put it in the bank.
Good idea. And next is the FEMA grant. Says here, the fire department received a grant and the money was posted to the FEMA fund. The money was $572.99 needed to be transferred to 101.208. And just, we're waiting back from the chief to see where in the TC budget it goes. What do we do with that much money?
I'd put in supplies.
Yeah.
The chief's on vacation and chief's 300.
Yeah, we can put it in supplies and, um, I think that's.
Fire hoses or something?
Barely. Gas, maybe.
More than 500, you're saying?
A fire hose, oh. I was kidding about that, I know, they're extremely expensive. So.
Arts West Improvements.
Well, anyway, to take care of all this, what kind of ordinances do you need?
I don't know that we need, um, I would have to defer to Kathy on that, to be honest. I don't know, I don't.
I mean, is there anything, any action the council has to do to make sure this?
You may have to do the transfer.
May have to. I.
That would make sense.
That's what it indicated.
And, and the workers' comp.
Right.
Needs to be appropriated.
So what's the timeline? Are we going to suspend on this too?
I don't think we need to.
Okay. Just kidding.
I'm going to get a shield.
All right, I guess you sit down now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're off. Out of the bar. Now can we get to Arts West? Okay, Arts West. I guess we are finally starting to move on that. And we have architectural plans coming up and we need money to pay for them. And the amounts are?
He has the money appropriated in cap. What he needs to be able to do is to move, right, he said requesting 12,000. We have a proposal from RVC for 10,000, but knowing Rich likes to have a little contingency into the professional services, 5323. Is this the last one he sent today? I think he sent an updated one later today.
Yeah, the, the number changed or the, the code?
Yeah, the code, the correct line, 5323, yes. Because it's in cap, it takes council action.
Okay.
And that is indeed to do the restroom accessibilities and the kitchen improvements.
Which desperately need to be done. Councilmember Patterson.
Do you know if that's, is that accessibility improvements to both the upstairs and the downstairs?
I, I do not know. I do know that it's estimated $100,000. So this will be something that'll be drawn up and bid out and oversaw and seen by RVC.
Thank you.
And we do plan on just contracting directly for their services. Any bartering or anything like that.
Yeah, I'm looking here at the documents that came from the architect. I don't see anything specifically that says, that answers your question about accessibility for both.
It says ADA modification to men's and women's bathrooms.
Which would imply that somehow.
Downstairs.
Downstairs.
Yeah.
But how would you get there when it's steps to get in and out?
Councilmember Patterson.
That's my second question is, is that, are we talking elevator? Are we talking?
This is not an elevator. Rich had put in the budget. It's a little bit high, but he might have requested twice that amount in order to get there, but there was.
So right now, the way that building operates, you come in off the parking lot on a ramp and then there is a bathroom upstairs in the performing space. But to get into the basement level is all steps. So my question is, I know we have to do handicap accessible, but if you were handicapped, how would you get down there in the first place?
You would have to exit the building and then go through the side entrance that leads into a small art room, which is at the ground floor.
If you face it, it's down there on the left.
It's, it's.
It's not ideal, I, you know.
I understand.
And why is the reason they didn't do the upstairs?
It already is, I think.
I, I do not know. This is just the proposal. I can, I can ask Rich and have that.
Councilmember Patterson.
I believe that it is accessible already.
It is.
Okay.
So this is making accessible both levels?
That's the question.
And upgrading the kitchen. It's sorely needed for their after-school programs and.
Right.
Okay.
Is this, is having both levels accessible per ADA?
And exiting the building and coming around the entire building and back into another entrance is considered ADA accessible? I'm just asking.
Yes.
It, it constitutes, and I hate this, but it constitutes reasonable accommodation. As, and that's the language that ADA uses. It's not my preferred, but it's what the law reads as.
Well, it's a step in the right direction anyway.
It's a step.
See, you asked. You just asked and boom, here it is.
Maybe if we just asked about West State Street bathrooms, something would happen there too. Because we have had a lot of citizen complaints. We've had a lot of citizen complaints.
Well, it's a different topic.
I understand.
I think we're on to miscellaneous unless there's anything else to cover, bud.
Are we doing the poet laureate under miscellaneous?
I think it would be.
Safety service, I'm sorry.
So yes, is the answer?
It's not on my list.
It would be considered personnel, come to think of it.
Why?
That's okay. I have nothing else under miscellaneous.
Thank you, Councilmember Reisner. And perhaps I'll also offer a friendly reminder for all of us to be more mindful of reverse rules of orders and being identified and called upon as we're commenting. It'll add a little air of civility as we move forward here. Moving on to the City and Safety Services Committee, which is chaired by Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. President Pro-Tam Butler. We have a couple items tonight. The first one is pretty straightforward. It's a pumper truck disposal, which I believe is going to go out and seal bid to, to get that out there. We're retiring one of our pumper trucks. We're also, as you may remember, have one on order to replace that. Again, some of our pumper trucks are aging. So this is pretty straightforward to have that piece of ordinance go through. The second one is very interesting. The second item on our agenda is a emergency management systems EMS joint facility feasibility study. This is a conversation that has taken place in the past, an idea that's, that is not a new one. But I'm intrigued and happy to hear this is moving forward. Chief, Chief Pyle and Service Safety Director Paula Rand Mosley have been exploring this. There are a couple options out there in terms of, of financing the feasibility study. One in particular, something that I just learned about, which is what's referred to as the Local Government Innovation Fund, which currently has, it was developed under House Bill 48, I believe. Anyway, one of the, the state house bills. And it has $45 million and 36 million of that goes to loans. It's like a revolving loan fund, but 9 million of it are for, are grants and they're no-match grants, which is really pretty nice. And those no-match grants can be used for up to $50,000 for a feasibility study with that no-match. To give you a little bit more context about this particular funding mechanism, it was actually House Bill 153. It's that the funds are awarded to projects that promote efficiency, shared services, co-production, and mergers among local governments. The idea then would be for this to be a feasibility study to look at having a complex, a structure, a building that could possibly house the Athens Police Department, the Ohio University Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, EMS, or EMA rather, the Emergency Management Agency under the direction of Fred Davis. It could also be for 911. It would essentially be a, a very nice joint structure, joint facility to where we're sheltering all of our EMS entities under one roof. So, and again, this is a feasibility study. So this is looking for the funding through this particular mechanism to see if we can, can start a feasibility study. Service Safety Director, anything to add?
No, you've got that. The chief has pointed out, or actually Dan Pfeifer from 911 has pointed out that these applications that have been funded in the past under LGI have been for combined 911 and emergency operations facilities. They do not see anything that's like our concept. We like to be unique, as you know. EMS has, it seems to be busting at the seams. They may not be able to wait. They may wind up going off on their own. As you know, the fire chief would like a new fire station and we could see some collaborative efforts. So not only are we asking for authorization to go ahead and apply in the September round, the chief has asked us also to seek $10,000 appropriation for a feasibility study to just be done locally in actual preparation. His concern is to apply in September, may not get the funding until December or next year. And right now, they have campus master planning occurring and the time may be right, so.
Thank you. Questions?
Would that be, could we get that reimbursed if we got the grant?
Usually not if you do that prior to any, it's. If you could view it as design engineering theories are usually born upon by the city, but this would be strictly the feasibility study. Now, it may not be utilized, but we can't offer it unless we do get that additional appropriation.
Number Vapi?
Has, has this thought been vetted with the Joint Police Task Force? Has there been some conversation about in prior meetings?
There has not. No, this is pretty new.
So it's pretty new?
In all transparency, the Joint Police Advisory Council does not meet over the summer months because we do have two student seated members. So therefore, we by default choose not to meet during the summer months. So no, we haven't. It's certainly something that would come up in September, but the grant will all even submit it, so.
So my other question is, chief, you're referring to chief of police, not chief?
Chief Pyle, correct.
Okay.
Well, chief Reimer too. Chief Reimer's all about this.
Floral, okay, chiefs.
I was remiss. I'm glad you brought that up, is that this would be fire as well, which as some of you know, I know are some of our fire stations. One in particular, we put a lot of money into it and so timing could be right, at least for this feasibility study to look to see what can be accomplished. No other questions?
Great.
Moving on, we do have two items under miscellaneous. The first one, and I know they've been waiting patiently in the back of the room, is to talk about the poet laureate prospectus, RFP, which President Pro-Tam Butler is going to describe. And I know we have former council member Carol Patterson, aka my mother.
You get us in trouble.
I know. Not really. Anyway, that's already inside. And also Bonnie Proudfoot to talk about this RFP.
Thank you. And, and that was a wonderful introduction. I will just acknowledge and echo that former Councilmember Patterson is also the chairperson of the Athens Municipal Arts Commission and has been present and participating in these meetings and discussions as well with Bonnie Proudfoot and looking at and vetting and exploring this idea of a, of a city poet laureate. So, thank you.
I do have handouts and we promise to be reasonably brief and reasonably charming.
Emphasis unreasonable.
Steve, you got these for the last one?
I brought the two because I, I think part of what our issue is that we, as the arts commissions, get confused. And I know Paula comes to our meetings sometimes and Paul. And I know Paula comes to our meetings sometimes, and Paul comes to our meetings, and our questions are always the same, what's the process? And one of the things that these two documents shows you is that we've done it absolutely backwards on two different projects in the last six months. So that's kind of partly why I brought that. This particular issue is to introduce to you the idea of a poet laureate for Athens. Somebody said, should it be under the Personnel Committee? We're talking of a position that receives an honorarium, not a salary. So, nope. But, the idea came to us from Bob Winters, and he came to the Arts Commission with, Ohio is about to have its first poet laureate. That is being vetted, or whatever you want to call it. The process is selecting three candidates, and then the governor will select the poet laureate, and that person will become the Ohio poet laureate in January of next year. So, that was what got this process started. So we began looking at, does this make sense? We had a lovely meeting with local poets, a bunch of them, and talked about, what did they think of the idea? Well, they were very excited. And at that time, we asked Bonnie Proudfoot if she would be on the committee for, to make the plans and to then help with the selection process. And she said, yes, she would, so we were excited. And we put together a committee, as is our custom, we form committees with expertise in the area of the project. As you know, since The Essence of Athens came out, we have just been busy as we possibly could be. We have projects constantly going on. And John Levelholz brought you the project of the traffic boxes, which is the second document. That's his follow-up document that is about ready to go out to get proposals for that. So that's why I brought that to you. While we were sitting back there, I noticed that at the bottom are the AMAC members. It doesn't list Kent Butler. It will tomorrow. I think the confusion is, is because you're the mayor's designate, that newer members of AMAC don't know you're a voting member, but he absolutely is, and his name will be there tomorrow. So, and we appreciate Kent's work with us greatly. Because he's the liaison to come back and forth and keep things moving. Also, I thought you might like to see what John has done to follow up with our, his RFP for the traffic boxes. And Bonnie and I were talking, what we'd like to do is put our RFP in that same template, so we start to, as a commission, have recognizable RFPs. So we'll just have to look like that, and it'll be in color. Yours is black and white, because we're poor. The United States has had national poet laureates since 1936, and they are generally two-year terms, but they can repeat. Forty-six approximately, I don't know which pot they're putting Ohio in, have state poet laureates. And the pay for those positions varies from several thousand to 10,000. 10 seems to be pretty much the highest for a state poet laureate. There are well over 100 cities, the source that we had from the OAC didn't know how many, but said, well over 100 cities that have poet laureates. And we wanted to be one of the first in Ohio.
We like being first.
We love being first, absolutely. We went to programs from Davis, California, Houston, Texas, Emory, California. Those were some of the plans that we looked at. And even when I took our document back to AMAC and said, well, what do you think? They said, well, the description of the duty seems sketchy. We found that from the national poet laureate all the way to cities, that's deliberate. Because the idea is for this poet laureate to create a plan and do something unique, poetic, for our community, not to give them a line-by-line description, you will do this, you will do that. So their plan will be a part of what they present to the committee. The selection committee will pick the plan that they see as the best fit for Athens. And so that was deliberate, that it's very nonspecific as far as exactly what this person will do as the poet laureate. The two things that are left blank in the document are the dates on the timetable. What we'd like is to start immediately, so the first date would be ASAP. And ideally, we would like to have this in place to have a poet laureate near the beginning of the school year. Probably wouldn't be right out of the gate, but sooner after, it's feasible. And we talked about a one-year term with the possibility of a second term renewable. The money, we kept debating back and forth, as has AMAC, somewhere around 1,500 to 2,000 a year. And within that scope, they would be expected to pay any expenses they have, like copying or materials or travel or whatever. So it's, whatever that amount is, they pay for those little incidental expenses. And that's been something that we've done with other projects, that materials have come out of the artist's money, rather than additional bills being turned in. Bonnie, would you like to tell them who's on the committee?
Well, the committee convened with myself, James Hill, who has a background in poetry and represents the Athens County Library System.
And is home babysitting tonight.
Yeah, right. And he would have been here. Kate Fox, who's been associated with various presses in Ohio and writes poetry and is continually reading poetry. She also was associated with the Ohio Arts Council and the Athens Historical Society for quite a long time. And Kevin Hayworth, who represents Ohio University and the OU Lit Fest, and has a finger in a lot of different literary projects, a published writer. So that was our committee. And we even wrote to the U.S. Librarians of Congress to find out information about what poets laureate have done in the past.
And got elephant answers. That's the best part.
And we went to AMAC and said, what would you have a poet laureate do for the community? And we generated a wonderful list. And so through that process, came up with criteria that seemed like it would be broad enough to allow for the individual temperament of the poet, but also express the desires of AMAC, that this position would really serve the community and advance poetry at the same time. And those were our joint goals.
And on page three of the prospectus is where those show up. Those are the considerations of the committee for selection, not requirements for the job. Exactly how to proceed from here is our big question. It seems to us that this is a fairly small amount of money that we're concerned with, so we were hoping that it does not require a three-reading process, that it can be more simplistic than that, that it can be just a, go ahead.
Well, there's Athens enhancement, but I don't know how much of that is all spoken for. I don't know if we can speak up to that. But we have $66,000 unappropriated as of May, this past month. So I can have the mayor work with the Auditor's Office to see what's already appropriated, and if we're able to move.
I just have one question. It's kind of nitpicky, and actually, it's pretty petty, but someone's going to ask it. Who owns the work?
That is a good question. We actually will add that in and clarify that. It's an interesting question, because if you write a poem for the city, does that mean you can never use that poem again yourself?
It would seem that the copyright would go to the city.
Right.
And then you would have to, then request.
Well, we are going to ask, that question actually did.
Especially since it's a enumeration here.
Right, right. That we can ask the OAC what their policy will be with our new poet laureate, and add that language to the piece.
Ohio Arts Commission is what you meant.
Ohio Arts Commission, yes, sorry.
Councilman Patterson?
Yeah, I would encourage, I too would like to see this going as fast as possible, but it would be, I think, a good idea to make sure it kind of coincides with the semester starting, so that we can have entrance from Ohio University. And if it is, you know, early September, that would probably fit, because I think they're back in session around the 20-something of August.
Our only concern, and Bonnie mentioned this when we were sitting down, is this isn't the best time of year to reach people.
Without reach, I agree.
That's a little bit of a concern, although we're not really, we're not looking for students. We're looking for permanent residents, people with a history in Athens. Those people at least check their information and their email and their news media. So I think it's reasonable that we could start pretty quickly.
Thank you.
Member Pappy?
So, a couple things. I was in St. Paul last summer, and incorporated into some of their sidewalks is poetry. You're walking along, and there's this beautiful poem, and I don't know if that's something you guys could check into, to find out if they have a poet laureate? Because my first question was, who picked that poem? Now, part of it was, you know, sidewalk restoration, and, you know. And where was it? St. Paul, Minnesota. Oh, St. Paul. So maybe a little bit of inquiry there as to how that happened. Was that some kind of committee, or was it the resident who picked that poem? Because obviously, you know, it could be different for different people. And then, the idea of having a poet laureate is really thrilling, because I think whenever we see anything of major significance today, somebody reads a poem, whether it's an inauguration event, or this, or that. And I think that just brings that down even closer to the people, so to speak, you know, in our community. And, oh, I know that person, and my kids, when they were involved in West Elementary, and they had the poet in residence come, and then they see that poet later, wow, you know, I remember that person. You know, again, it's a way to bring poetry and literature to the people, and I think it's a great idea.
And we have been asked to question, are there people in Athens that could do this? Bonnie, we expect many applications.
Numerous people, numerous.
There was a, the poetry on the bus, wasn't that presented to you at one of the AMAC as well?
We talked about poetry on the bus.
On the bus. But I like the sidewalk ideas as well. We're all over the side of the parking garage.
Oh, that would be.
That would be nice.
Wraps.
Giant parking lot wrap.
Part of, to come back to what we were saying, Mr. Reisner, there is, there was a discussion of creating an archive, like some piece of work that was annually produced by the poet laureate, and then archiving that at the library. And also, review comments being published, or some kind of, like, at the very end, some kind of wrap-up of a tenure, and the poet laureate's notes on their tenure. So, in, and keeping it as part of a public document. So, you know, I don't really know the answer to your question about who would own intellectual property. My feeling is it probably would stay with the artist, if it was created by the artist. But that's something worth pursuing. But part of this endeavor is to create some permanent documents that would remain with the county, with it somewhere in the library system, or with the city of Athens somewhere.
But we will defer to the state on that ownership language.
There would be a Kate Fox question, probably.
Member Butler?
Thank you. I want to echo my support for moving forward with this as well, and offering a blessing, as informal as it may be, since I don't think we need to take legislative action, if the mayor's going to move forward with it. But I do want to express support and thank Carol, and Bonnie, and the subcommittee, and AMAC as well, for staying on top of this and being persistent in wanting to present, as well to help get this out and communicate with the community, that this is something that we support and are invested in. So I'm all in favor of it. I think the idea of having an ambassador, someone that's presenting and representing ideas such as in the form of poetry at events, and working within the schools and the community, I think it's wonderful, and I'm fully supportive. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I too want to thank both of you for coming. I know the viewing audience can't see this, but as you come walking down the hallway to come into chambers, we now have this wrap of artwork that's on the walls, and my vision could be that the poet laureate's poem is splashed on the walls as you come into the city building, which would be really nice as well.
I liked your new furniture, by the way.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
We have just a couple more items, real quick. One is an announcement, and that is that the Athens Soil and Water Conservation District, in conjunction with the city of Athens and Ohio University, is sponsoring a public workshop. The public workshop will be Tuesday, June 16th, at between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. It'll be at Ohio University's Life Sciences Building on campus, and it's entitled, Improving Your Water Quality with Stormwater Management. It's free to all, and all are welcome to come to this workshop. The last thing is to also inform everybody that the cigarette butt bins are being installed on Court Street. I believe there's four that have been put up. And again, these are cigarette butt recycling bins that have been painted by Passion Works, and it's been funded by the Keep America Beautiful Cigarette Butt Litter Program, as well as the Athens Foundation, and being hung by our city workers. So you will notice them going up more than more. There will be 52 total that are going up, up and down Court Street and around OU's campus. So more to come, but this is a step forward in beautifying, or at least hopefully mitigating, cigarette butt litter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, under miscellaneous?
Officer Rick is retiring, so on Friday, what is the date, Friday?
The 12th, I believe.
June 12th, from 1:00 to 3:00. There's a reception up here in the city council chambers for the Dare Officer, Rick Crossen. It's open to the public for anyone to come and say.
What were the hours again, please?
1:00 to 3:00, here in council chambers.
Could you put that on the website, maybe?
Could you put that on the website, maybe?
I can request that.
Something, because I think, you know, he has been involved so much with kids, and they may not be watching, their parents may not be watching.
He is retiring as a full-time dare officer? The idea is to bring him back once he's served his time out, observed to strictly just do dare, because he loves it so much, he wants to continue in that.
If I might add, he loves it so much, by the way, and this is good for everyone to know, he's actually teaching on the 11th, a Head Start course on, with the Dare Program, so he's working up to the bloody last day. Good for him. He will be missed until he returns.
So early, yeah.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Actually, maybe under miscellaneous, I had one more question, perhaps for the Safety Director regarding Halloween and nailing down a date. I think there had been discussion with the mayor, who said he was going to look into it and talk with you, and Department heads to confirm that the 31st was accurate and likely to be the date. This might aid and help individuals involved with planning and preparing. I know the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee is trying to be proactive, not to put you on the spot, but...
We selected October 31st, but we're actually meeting with the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee next Monday.
Okay, wonderful.
To go over, you know, logistics and what they'd like to see. If there is a date change request, I guess I'd like to hear that sooner than later.
No, I was just confirming...
Because we've already given that information at the university. There's been a women's race for the cure scheduled for the 4th, but I understand it was kind of an issue, seemed to arise last year, but Halloween is, October 31st is a Saturday. But if there's a change in that, I guess I'll inform you after our meeting with the Halloween Clean and Safe Committee.
Okay. Yeah, I was just confirming that it looked like that was the date that would be confirmed as hosting Halloween slash it being held, the function being held, whatever you want to call it.
Say, it might be cold.
Member Butler?
Sorry.
I just, I just wanted, there are five Saturdays, and you generally do look at the other calendar of events in, between the university and the city on these particular weekends, correct?
We do. There might be a state home game, I can't recall. The reason we track that is it seems to get a lot of attraction from the students, if there's something happening in the shoe, but then they still come back out.
Thank you. That's all I had. Do you have any other miscellaneous, or...
No, but the Halloween closings would come back forth to this body here, after we establish those.
Thank you. Moving on to Transportation Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Michelle Pappy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have one item this evening, and it regards our bus purchase. So, we have been discussing for some time the purchase of these low-rider buses. And if you all recall, we were, sorry, I'm trying to find my email here, we were dealing with the upfront cost in order to order the buses. And we don't quite have enough money, or HAPCAP was having a difficult time coming up with the money. So, the deadline is July 6th, and the additional $30,000, we would like to request council move forward with appropriating, and we do have that money available in that line. So, HAPCAP has been out there trying to locate other sources, some of which are grant-funded, for instance, Athens Foundation, and that doesn't come due till the fall. So, we're hoping to recoup, I think, some of this money. Maybe, maybe not, we may have it, have to pay it straight out, but Service Safety Director, would you like to comment more?
Just that, you know, Michael Lockman and HAPCAP did exactly what was requested, to go out and try to seek funding to purchase the second lowrider, but it's not available, and they'd like to get in on the state procurement bid date of July 6th. So, yes, it means more cost to us, but that from that experience, like, for example, I want to say the Oblenas Foundation, there's been others that have, they've contacted that say, bring forth the next proposal, maybe for next year or what have you. I just can't see buying the traditional bus when we have these opportunities now to get something else.
Right, right. And we've already appropriated money for the first bus. So, what we're asking for is the appropriation for the second bus.
The additional money's needed in order to get that second lowrider bus.
Correct.
And the auditor did indicate, like you stated, that there was something...
Yes. Will this require a suspension, if it's due by July?
Absolutely. Because there's the fifth Monday in the month, and it'll be after...
Right. I just, I think it's good if we try to identify those ahead of time, so it gives sunshine to all of them.
I did have a conversation with Michael Lockman about a month ago, and they were working on this, and it's just not, what, again, what you had mentioned is, it's much better that they now know of these possible resources and grant opportunities, but that's not going to work for this go-around. Any other comments or questions? We have committed the one lowrider, I think probably people who ride public transportation will, you know, one other lowrider buses, once they get used to one.
Just one question. If everything goes through, and we get the money and everything, when could we expect delivery, and actually see it on the street?
I bet it's probably 12 to 15 weeks out, I'd say at a minimum. I don't have my notes on that, but I can find that, Angela.
Somewhere within, say, six months of actual cutting the check. Okay.
Any other comments? Thank you. Service Safety, any other transportation items? I'm not aware of any.
Thank you, having seen none. Thank you, Councilwoman Pappy, for chairing, and thank you, Executive Branch, acting mayor nicely. We are wrapping up and departing at 8:40 p.m. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.